Hey, everyone. It looks like I got Rich and Alan and myself. Miranda, do you know who we're waiting on as the fourth?
Larry.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. How's everybody doing? Can I tell you guys something exciting?
Of course.
It's not really that exciting, but I just got an... Have you guys ever picked apples with an apple picker? With like the basket that has teeth on it? Anybody?
Sounds pretty efficient.
It's super efficient. I just got one. Our apples are bigger than they've ever been. And the tree is like forty feet high. So maybe not quite, it's maybe thirty-five. But yeah, it's really fun. If anybody wants to come over and pick some apples with the apple picker, you're welcome to come over.
Okay. I might take you up on that. When I was a kid, my grandmother had an apple tree and a cherry tree. Loved climbing it to pick the fruit.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the limbs are just like perfectly spaced for climbing. Although I don't think I've climbed a cherry tree, I would imagine that might be kind of messy to climb.
Well, the ones in Pennsylvania were pretty thick and large. Hers were real old trees. Not scrawny little ones like that we have here.
Totally. Yeah. You should... I don't know if you noticed our apple tree, Alan, when you're over, but it shouldn't exist up here.
Yeah, fruit trees up here, I would think, would be an anomaly.
Yeah, I think it's like just on the east side of the house. And the house really protects it, kind of envelopes it, and it just thrives. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, one thing I've learned about being up here is that microclimates are super different. And they really help something grow or they stop it from growing. And it's every little valley has a different nook and cranny that gets a different amount of sun and a different amount of water. It's just fascinating up here at altitude in the mountains. How drastic one area can be from just a few hundred yards away just because of where it's placed in the little... In the mountains. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah, it's super cool. Super neat. You guys want... I'll text Larry real quick, see what he's doing.
Actually, just texted him too, to see if he's able to... I'm hoping he didn't go. He did say he could do virtual.
Was it Rich just on?
Yeah, Rich is here.
You're in the bright light, couldn't recognize you.
Yeah, there was light in this room when I started, but it's since gotten dark.
Yeah, days are getting shorter.
Yeah.
I'm gonna need now some snow. Going to a ski waxing party this weekend.
That'll make it snow.
Yeah. Put on my snow tires. That might be a jinx. I don't know.
Yeah, I just gotta go schedule to get my snow tires on, and then it'll probably snow.
Miranda, can we talk about the October twentieth event? Is that allowed?
I mean, I don't even know if this is technically a work session. Is the ultimate goal to like vote on something? If not, you can go totally get started. I guess it depends on if you're taking a formal action or not tonight.
Well, I think the action is to decide which project.
Yeah.
Or four of us, right?
Erica unfortunately does not count in your quorum capacity. But you can get... I mean, you could start talking about... Won't be able to like do a final vote for the project until he jumps on.
Yeah, let's go for it.
Okay. So, since we met in late September, I have done some research. I've also reached out to Miles with the ME and B program. And I... Melody and myself and Jen have been in touch with him over the years after the 2018 Capstone project. And so he's been... He's a great resource and will continue to be so. But the first meeting, I believe it was myself and Billy, Mayor Billy, on the BOT. And we met with Miles and talked about the two projects. And with the idea that like really this electrification roadmap or this water and energy nexus. And he was excited about both. So that led to another conversation and some more research on Miles' end. So I'll update you guys with that at some point. But to get us started, there are multiple different groups within the CU ME and the Capstone cohort group project. And there's particularly, there's a policy group and there's an energy group. And so those are the two groups that would be interested in our project. So policy would be really interested in the water-energy nexus. And the energy group would most likely be really interested in our electrification roadmap. There are... There's an application. I don't know if you guys think it's important to see that right now. Let me pull it up real quick just to have the questions. So the where we are at now is thinking about the details. So we talked about finances and really just especially based on the budget conversation this past week. We're not in a good spot for really supporting a project financially. We may be in January, which is when we'll actually would meet with students if our project is accepted. And we'd actually show up and at an event down in Boulder. And it's kind of like a mixer where basically you're there to advertise your project and basically entice these students to like work with you for their final project. And that's like the end of January. So most... Miles shared with me that last year sixty percent of their projects were funded, forty percent were not. And has suggested that both of these projects are really great ideas and they'd like to see us submit a proposal for both, actually. And the things... Oh, Larry said that he's trying, Miranda. You might be helping him already.
Not to speak out for him. I'll try to help him.
I have to step away for a minute. So I apologize.
No worries. Don't you got to, Rich? So the other big pieces of this project, like you want to have a topic and a project proposal that has a beginning, a middle, and an end. But you also want to have mentorship. You want to have somebody that has the capacity and the experience and the, you know, the knowledge to really support these students. Because a big part of these projects is the work itself, but also where is this going to launch these students as far as where they want to go with their careers? And in that regards, these projects are pretty different. The... So fast forward to a conversation I had with Miles today. And Miles reached out to two professors within the program and asked them like, okay, you know, questions? What would be the advantages of each of these programs? You know, do you think students would be interested? Like, yes, yes, yes. And from there, we've kind of started to like pull apart some of the projects and trying to figure out like which one will be stronger overall. And this is where you guys get to decide. Do we want to do two projects and submit two projects? I will tell you that my capacity is limited at twenty-five hours a week. And so I would ask that if someone, you know, if we want to submit two projects, I feel very confident submitting the electrification roadmap. But the water-energy nexus, I don't necessarily have access to a lot of the watershed conversations that are happening right now. And so I think that that's an important piece to have a BOT member that would be able to really take a mentorship and kind of a responsible role within that project and its development. The... Let me stop there. Anybody have any questions so far?
My only question is, Miranda, can you remind us how much there is in the C and D fund right now?
The challenge, and I had shared this with Erica, so I'll share with the group. There's about $20,000, but we can't use those funds this year because they're not budgeted for. Oh, but they are being budgeted for in 2023. But so they wouldn't be accessible to us until January. I don't know how much of a difference that makes.
Yep.
January will be here before we know it.
I know, we will blink and it will happen. But I just want to... And I'm not sure, again, to that point, I'm not sure if it makes a difference. But about $20,000 is what we're budgeting for that project or for as revenue coming in from that.
Miranda, didn't you say it was fifteen thousand, like budgeted?
I was saying twenty, and I feel like I keep saying twenty, but I don't mean it. Hold on. It's $15,000 in expenses, $20,000 in revenue is what we've budgeted here.
And is any of that allocated?
No, it's just... It's just sitting in a zero way in that zero waste line item.
Okay, that's helpful. So, and we can talk about budget at some point too. If you guys want to have an update as far as the BOT meeting last Tuesday and kind of where the budget conversation started. But it's not... There's not a lot of wiggle room. And there's going to be a lot of things trying to vie for limited resources this year, this coming year. So Miles and I chatted again today and we talked about some feedback that was given to him from two of the professors. One in policy, one in energy at CU Boulder. And of course, the policy group's really excited about the energy-water nexus. But the energy group's feedback about that project, that water-energy nexus, was that the... It's more of a like a philosophical project. It's not necessarily something that may be very concrete, which I don't... I don't think that there's... That's not a negative thing necessarily, but it can be difficult as far as having a start, a middle, beginning, and an end to the project. And really having it be able to like wrapped up and like delivered to Netherlands in a bow, which is what we had with our 2018 renewable energy map project. So that's kind of, again, I'm also not an energy-water expert. And we would really need to bring in others from the community, which is why I asked Billy to meet with Miles and I for the first meeting. Because Billy and Tom are really working on this watershed map right now. And the BOT just had a closed session on conditional water rights and kind of what's happening with that. So we would need to bring the BOT in if we were to go that route. As far as the electrification, I personally feel much more comfortable with that. And it's because of my own experience, my own knowledge base. But it's also a really logical project development based on our 100% renewable energy roadmap from 2018. So we already have this really solid report that was done by these students. And this can be kind of a next step to that initial project that was done, you know, five years prior. The other thing about that project is it's... There's a lot happening in electrification right now. So there's going to be a lot of potential gaps where they may say, you know, this stuff is coming down the pipeline. It's not available now. We expect to see it in a few years. Grant funding is headed this direction, like etc. But in general, it's a pretty concrete task. And it's going to... Both these projects are going to get students excited because they are an opportunity to work with municipalities and are topics that they're probably already interested in, given the tracks that they've chosen in their grad program. Again, that idea of mentorship and capacity. You know, we would need people that are dedicated to really meet with these folks on a weekly basis or a monthly basis and be available for questions and kind of help guide them and steer them as they continue on these projects and the development. So additional questions. Melody just asked a great question about funds in the C and D program, which there's fifteen thousand. We could definitely ask to use those funds. We did pay previous students $1,500 per person. There is a minimum of three students per project. I asked Miles today, we could ask for no more than three students. Because as you increase students, you're going to increase more time, right? More time commitment as far as individual mentorship or, you know, group meetings, things like that.
Well, it seems like electrification is more of a natural, given our town goal. I mean, the energy-water nexus does sound a little too philosophical. Although we are looking at those kinds of issues as far as, you know, is pumping out of Barker worse than building a reservoir of our own, etc. So that's also an issue we're going to have to deal with. But you're right. I mean, that's a BOT item right now. Whereas electrification is more on our plate.
I agree with everything you said.
Hi, folks. This is Larry. Sorry to be audio only, but my computer's crashed, but I can hear you. Hoping you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes. Great.
No, we can't.
So there's a gap, but I just want to say that I love everything Erica said about electrification. And I would support going in that direction. My only concern is that I feel like the Capstone students would need an active board member participation. And, you know, I'm just wondering who that would be, etc.
Larry, to confirm, are you saying a SAB board member or a BOT?
Oh, I'm sorry, SAB, SAB. It's hard for me to... It's hard for me to imagine the whole energy piece staying within the SAB purview without a board member to sort of work with the students. And it wouldn't maybe that were to work, but somebody like a... Just a go-to person.
Larry, I don't want to speak for anyone, but what I'm envisioning personally is that I could be the primary because it's, you know, a lot of work I'm already working, I'm already doing and focused on. It also would be great as far as mentorship, like being able to pull them into conversations and trainings with CC. Like Alan, the Crestabute electrification that's going to happen early November. You know, how did Crestabute commit to 100% electrification for all new builds? There's a meeting in early November that CC4CA is hosting. So if you guys are interested, send me an email and I'll try to remember to forward it to SAB when it's live. But being able to tie them into things like that, Boulder County, you know, Marshall Fire Recovery, huge electrification focus. So I see definitely myself being available to them. I think it's going to be tough as far as like capacity and just like an hours in the week kind of thing. But I also think it'd be fantastic to have another SAB member that's also saying, yeah, I have capacity to support these people. You know, I want to be part of these conversations. I want to help answer questions, etc.
Yeah, that's kind of what I meant. You know, you're fantastic contact person. So but that was just a wish that I have. Other than that, I'd love this. I'd love Capstone, everything. So I'm thrilled about this.
Do we have an energy subcommittee?
We do. Yeah, right now it's really focused on the US solar campaign. But that's Chris Larson, Melody Baumhofer, Leah Hannan, I believe, Harry. And then Tim Raider is also interested in that. So we have some folks on the energy subcommittee. We just want to reach out and see who feels like they have capacity.
Yeah, we definitely would want them to connect with that group. Because, you know, I think the 100% renewable goes hand in hand with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Go ahead, I'm glad, Larry, I'm sorry. Larry, hello?
Was that a question?
No, you have to say something. It seemed like I interrupted you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I apologize for this gap. It does seem like it belongs in energy, the energy subcommittee. That, to me, would make sense. But we can't invent work for people, you know? It's like they're... Maybe they're busy. And so I just wanted to put that out there as a thought for this. Electrification is a big deal and it's so complex. Oh, my gosh, this is as big as it gets in some ways. Like complexity. So I've looked at this subject before. It's frightening to me. But Netherlands is small enough that this is a workable project. This is why I'm so excited. This is perfect. You could drop this big thinking model down onto tiny Netherlands successfully. And I can't overemphasize how important this kind of stuff is to present to the real world. So we're already doing this on multiple levels in Netherlands, little tiny Netherlands. And so here's another opportunity. So I'm thrilled.
Yeah, and I think if you look at what's going on with natural gas rates are supposed to increase by 54% this winter. So if somebody signs up with US Solar for all solar and then they decide to replace their stove with an electric stove, damn, they're going to save a ton of money, although, you know, it does cost a lot of upfront money to make the conversion. Maybe there'd be some grants coming down the pike at some point. I don't know what's going to be available from the state or the county or I don't think... I don't know if Excel's doing anything. Anyway, there's going to be some motivation when natural gas prices go zooming up the way they're going to. Natural gas has been traditionally less expensive. That's not going to be the case if you're using renewables.
Long term, we have all the cards in our favor moving forward. Everything is going to be working in conversion favor, everything. But we need... We need models of workability. You know, we really need those. I mean, we don't have them right now. So that's just what I'm thinking about, models.
Well, that's a good area for investigation by the team at CU.
Yes, yes.
It sounds like you have some background, Larry, that you can share with them.
Well, yeah, I'm happy to weigh in. You know, I talk to Eric all the time. And so for sure, it's just that I'm zero waste guy right now and we are so busy. I mean, we really are. And so I need to stay focused on that, just to be, you know, fair. So that's kind of where I'm at. But we have a big team and Netherlands has all these high talent people out there in the woodwork. They do. I met a lot of them this summer at the farmer's market, just floating by, climatologists. I mean, serious, you know, just deeply technical people. Kind of amazing. So it's like they're right there. And I think part of, you know, a longer term appeal could work. But Capstone is the kind of thing, it's almost like a calling card to these people, you know, to get them drawn in. So that's another thing that excites me.
Yeah, I think I'm in the same camp, you know, as you, Erica, of I feel like I have a lot more ability to explain and understand and talk about electrification strategies, but not necessarily so much the other project. So I personally would just lean that way because I understand it better. But if, you know, Tom wanted to take on helping you submit that second application, I'd totally support that too. So I think I'm kind of torn as to how we move forward here with the four of us here that can say, yeah, we're totally up for an electrification project. And it's not that we're not up for the other one. I think we all would be satisfied with the other one too. We just don't necessarily have as much expertise and experience to develop, you know, a proposal for what that project would look like. I mean, that's just the general sense I'm getting from the four of us that are here. I'd also love to volunteer Chris Larson as a mentor for the Capstone group. You know, I know he's not here, but how cool would it be to be, you know, working with a former mayor and somebody who has kind of that experience and understanding? But I'm also happy to be a resource for them and have them, you know, be able to text me or email me and when they have a question or anything like that. Just because they do have a lot of historical knowledge about SAB throughout town years and such. So I'm happy to volunteer myself for that as well. And yeah, I think that sums up what my thinking is. How does the rest of SAB feel about making a motion to definitely pursue the electrification project? And then if Tom wants to work with Erica on applying for a water project that we would approve doing both?
I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to make that motion exactly the way you just said it. But can I ask, can I ask Erica to write it down? For, for a minute?
Yes, absolutely, Larry. Melody, tell me again.
So we support submitting an application for an electrification project. And if another SAB member such as Tom would like to pursue submitting an application for the Water Energy Nexus Project, we also support that.
Lovely. So I'd like to make that motion.
I will second it.
All right, and we will vote. I will start with first on my screen is Larry.
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Alan?
Yes.
Great.
Melody, could I be so bold as to ask you to ask Chris via some method of communication, whatever you like? To, to, to help the Capstone Group, just exactly the way you described it. He would be so perfect.
Yes, definitely. I think we can. I'll, I'll talk with him about whether or not he feels like it's appropriate for them to join our Energy Subcommittee meetings and, and kind of be a part of it that way. Or whether, you know, him and I want to kind of meet with these guys separately. But yeah, I, I think I can do that.
Great, thank you. Wonderful.
I mean, Melody, right now the Energy Subcommittee is really US Solar focused, but that's going to be phasing out, you know, end of December.
Exactly. And so then, you know, we can talk with him about what he thinks about moving to. Either adding on this or having it be the main focus of our, you know, Energy Subcommittee meetings in the new year.
You know, the other piece I just want to throw out there too is I, I feel like the electrification roadmap is going to include water. Because it's, it's going to include that overall energy use of the town. And so we could ask that that's like a small section of this larger conversation of how do we electrify Netherlands? Energy.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's brilliant. It really is. I totally support that.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to Tom and see what he thinks and what he prefers. We'll go forward from there. So then the project is due October 28th. So I think we meet on the 27th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be able to give an update to everyone before we submit something. Great. Thanks, you all. It's really helpful.
Yeah, and if you need help with anything, Erica, let me know. As far as getting applications together, anything like that.
Okay, sounds great. Sounds great. And I guess a larger question would be, you know, funding. In the application which I put in the chat, it says. Compensation. Capstone project selection is a competitive process. While compensation is one of the many factors that students consider, paid projects are the most sought after and competitive. We highly encourage but do not require Capstone partners to compensate students. It says $2,000 to $6,000, which could come in the form of W2 employment, 1099 contract or status or stipend. So do we want to add anything about the potential for the CND? Or just keep that off the table considering 40% of projects aren't, aren't financially compensated?
You know, it, it worked out for us last time when we said we are advocating for funding, but we can't guarantee it. And so I'm wondering if it's wise to pursue the same strategy. I mean, I would love to petition the BOT to get, you know, say $5,000 from the CND funding. It's not a whole lot, but it's something to be able to pay the students for, you know, their product that they're going to give us. But that said, until, you know, the budget is finalized and passed, we can't necessarily guarantee it. But that would be the direction, I guess, I would go.
Yeah, I support that. If, if maybe there's just a sentence, pretty much the way you said it, something about we would advocate for it or whatever you exactly said, but need to await the outcome of budgetary process or something.
Sounds good.
I agree, obviously.
By the way, I'll just mention quickly that at the last farmer's market, I was talking with Ellie, who, who worked on the wildfire mitigation process this summer. And she mentioned that. Vale, Colorado, Vale, the Vale Mountain Resort. Just submitted a, a request to Capstone and included $0. Vale, Color, Vale, the largest mountain, ski mountain in the world. I mean, they have more money than Netherlands combined for, I mean, so. And Ellie told me that as a way of cheering me up. Because I, you know, I was telling her I wasn't sure about funds. So I'll just pass that on.
That's helpful. Didn't they just make like 2.5 billion this last year? Anybody see that?
Wow. They're actually going to pay their employees more than $15 now. They might even get $18 now.
Slowly but surely. Great. Anything else about Capstone? I feel like I've got really solid direction from you all. I'll reach out to Tom to see about this, if he feels like he has capacity to pursue the other project as well. Just an assumption I've made is that we really can only do one project this upcoming year. Is that accurate or do you guys feel like we would want to, to pursue both? It just feels like we're pretty limited in resources and I, I know I couldn't be the primary person for both projects.
Yeah, my, my feeling would be that we can pursue one. Unless, you know, the limiting factor, like you're saying, is really people for these students to be able to connect with. So if, you know, we did have students that were interested in both. And we had, say, Tom and Billy that are willing to head up that Water Nexus Capstone Group. And me, you know, in the Energy Subcommittee, helping up that other Capstone Group, then, then maybe. But I don't think we'd be able to get funding necessarily for both of them. So I think that would be worrying as well.
I'm just wondering what the Capstone students themselves care about, you know, if they were given a choice, let's say. Because, you know, the whole water issue, I'm freaking out about it myself personally. And I'm just going through a thing of thinking 50-year climate change. And I'm freaking out. And, and so it's like Netherlands has an opportunity in the, in the next year to get ready to actually secure its water future forever. There's all this heavy lifting to do. And so, but it's so, at, at a certain level, I'm like, emergency. 2024 is the cutoff for the 100 acre foot development submittal of plans. That's serious stuff, water rights in Colorado. Oh my gosh. So if Tom, for example, and Billy, who I've heard from, just off the side, little emails, they're busy. But it's like, if they, for example, decide, this is, this is it, we, we need to focus. And I think they do, in my humble opinion. And they wanted Capstone help, then I, I guess I would say, let's go with that. And, you know, electrification will just have to wait because this 2024 thing is a, is a hard cutoff. And when I figured that out, looking at the docs, the water rights docs, I got a little shudder. Because, oh my gosh, so I'll stop right there. But I just want to say that, you know, that's how I feel.
Larry, it's actually, it's Miranda. It's actually not a hard cutoff. It's the, it's our court date for due diligence. And so what that looks like is that we need to ensure that we're demonstrating that we're doing everything we need to be doing to continue to secure those water rights. But it's not a one and done, it's February or nothing. It's just the due diligence here.
Which, which has been done for how long, Miranda? How long is this cycle of having to go to court?
It's every six years, I believe.
Since?
Oh, forever. I don't know how long, how long back we've been going, but no, we've been working with our attorney for almost 20 years.
Well, you know, I could go off on a, on a rant about this because of the present intake process at Middle Bolder Creek. But I won't, so I'm sparing you. And I'm willing to, to not give up on this and just go with the wiser voices, whatever those are. So, you know, it's like, you know, I've done due diligence work before. You have to have things figured out to do the due diligence. It's like you can't just make it up. So, you know, but I, you know, I'm thrilled that Billy and Tom are, are on this. I'm really thrilled about that. So. All I was saying was if they said, you know, we want Capstone, then we should, I think, should, you know, accede to them.
But I'm going to go ahead and, and speak for the board, which I don't often do. But I'm not sure that that's a Capstone appropriate project. There are so many legal components and a lot of other people involved, from engineers to lawyers to we're looking to hire additional water engineers. I'm just not sure that that's an appropriate level for them to be operating at. And not that I don't trust and think Capstone students are, are not incredible, just not sure that's the appropriate venue for them.
Well, that's good feedback. I just wonder, has, has Tom expressed a strong, you know, wish about them? Or where did that come from?
So this, this project idea came from our last SAB meeting. And Melody and I, we had a list. Melody, was it on the list? Or it was an additional thing that Tom added?
I think it was an additional thing that Tom brought up. That we all agreed was, you know, a crucial issue that Netherlands is facing.
And again, that's where I'm not sure, I'm, I don't want to misspeak. You know, that's obviously where Tom is at. I, as a staff member, would caution against it just because of the intimate work that I'm doing that is not ready to be released publicly. I'm not sure. And the work that's happened this week, I'm not sure I would advocate for the Capstone project on this front. And that's just really based off of a meeting I had with attorneys and engineers yesterday. So it's not like, you know, and I don't want to, I don't want to guide, make it seem like I've misled anyone because you have been talking about this. I'm just not, I don't know, I'm not sure I can advocate as staff for that.
I think we should take Miranda's advice and focus on electrification.
I agree completely.
And I guess I would add that, that a part of the discussion yesterday was of course recognizing the need to have SAB, ProSAB, Planning Commission, all these individuals at the table when we get further into that water rights discussion. But I think we need to let the engineers and the attorneys do their, their analysis first.
Yes, I agree with that completely.
It might, it, it could also be really frustrating for students if there is this legal barrier to what they can engage in. I could see that being very, very tricky.
Yeah, I didn't think about that, Erica. I would agree. And, and I feel like I even too have legal barriers as staff. And so I, I totally agree. I would hate, and I would also hate for them to be stalled because of legal complexities.
Yeah, absolutely. Would you?
So do we need to amend the motion that we passed?
Well, what do you think, Rich? You're a lawyer.
Well, I don't, I'm not acting here in that capacity in any way, shape or form. I'm just a member of the committee. Like everybody else. So certainly not in a capacity to give it legal advice. But I mean, is, is the motion, based on what we've said, it sounds like the motion does need to be changed based on everyone's sentiments and what Miranda said.
I'd agree. Just focus on electrification.
Sorry, I should have chimed in earlier. I didn't really think through that until with, until we started talking further about this. I would agree.
Well, Erica, could you read the actual motion that we, we voted on back?
SAB supports submitting an application for an electrification project. And if another SAB member such as Tom would like to pursue a project such as the Water Energy Nexus Project, we'll also support that. So do you want to say SAB supports pursuing an electrification project through the Capstone ME&amp;B program?
Yeah, I just think it's hard because Tom's not here. But I would also say Tom hasn't been involved in a lot of the conversations that have happened currently regarding water. So wouldn't even say that Tom, that's just because he's been gone, Tom is out of position to weigh in. So I don't know if you want to keep that still on the table, but there's a lot of, there's a lot more that could go into this. You could just make the motion your first initial emotion and then leave the Tom part out and revisit that at a future meeting.
Could we leave the Tom part out? I mean, that seems more accurate to me. We're kind of saying no to Tom. I mean, kind of.
Well, I think we've agreed on electrification and we, we need to talk to Tom at some later date.
The reason for this meeting being scheduled like it was, was there was a, a date. That we needed to do this by and at least make recommendations to the board. So I don't, I think that we have to act. So maybe we could change it to be, we support the electrification. And if appropriate, can pursue this other thing.
And I guess I'm just, I'm willing to take that, take that on myself and just say, staff are advising not to. And if Tom has questions, he can, Tom, talk with me about it. I'm advising that we don't.
Okay, if Miranda's advising that we don't, there's no way we should do it. So I think that we should, I move that we amend the previous motion that was passed to focus solely on the electrification.
Right, I second that. Just electrification, period. Right. My second amendment, electrification, period. Yeah. End it right there.
All right. With the motion and the second, we will take a vote. Alan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Rich?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And that passes, so we will amend the motion to just drop that second sentence.
By the way, I'm happy to talk to Tom in any capacity, you know, if necessary. I think, you know, Miranda can, can deal with any issues if he has any. Because I'm right there with him on the water thing. So, but, you know, I can explain what we talked about.
It may make sense to, I, I'll reach out, I can reach out to Tom and just ask, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we just have, I would say, has to be, has to go to the B O T in a confidential manner. And I'm trying not to do too many of these one-offs. So I'll also say he should check his email. There's, there's, you know, I agree, Larry. I think unfortunately, this is one of those tricky pieces that a lot of it is receiving legal guidance, which is going to occur in a confidential setting.
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to be a lot of executive sessions involved.
Yes.
But I think we should.
In that case.
Miranda's lap.
In that case, let's just let Miranda do her magic and everything will be great.
Yeah, I think the, the thing is, the town and the B O T are on point with experts.
I'm also really.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Erica.
I was just going to say, I'm really excited to hear that these boards are going to be invited to the table as well. Because I think that'll help for multitude of reasons, but community engagement, you know, buy-in. But then also being able to like have space where creative ideas can be brought up and discussed with the experts too. And, and be able to really kind of sift through all of the different ideas as a team. I'm really excited to hear that. So thanks for sharing that, Miranda.
Yeah. And I do think, you know, I know in the past that there's been some concern about, you know, our current representatives and who they are. And so what I, what I can share and will share is that the town anticipates contracting with a water, water rights engineer. And that's what they specialize in. And, and their purpose is to evaluate all of the opportunities before us. Not necessarily kind of the one tract, sticking with that reservoir, but really doing a full comprehensive review. And so we're looking to select that company here in the next couple of weeks. Because JBA just doesn't have that capacity. JBA does, you know, water infrastructure development. But these companies really just focus on water rate, you know, water rate analysis and, and water storage capacity. So more to come on who that is. But, and then once we've signed kind of a letter of agreement, that of course will go before the Board of Trustees. So people know who we've, we're going to contract with.
That sounds good.
Thank you. Congratulations. I'm so thrilled to hear that. I really am.
Great. Well, I believe that Erica, you have the direction you need from us. Like I said, let me know if you need any help or want somebody to look over that application before you send it in. Does anybody else have anything to add to this discussion? I think we're pretty wrapped up here. Uh, hearing nothing, I will say that we can. Yeah?
Just a second. Can I add something briefly?
Yes.
So who's planning to attend October 20th at the Backdoor Theater?
At the what?
The Backdoor Theater.
What's happening there?
So I, I sent an email with a flyer for it today, Alan. But we are having a community solar garden event at the Backdoor Theater from 5:30 to 8:30. I confirmed Backcountry Pizza, we are going to have a panel of experts to discuss energy. And we'll have Q and A about the solar garden. We'll also have a film at the very end, The Scale of Hope, which is a new film by Patagonia. It's about climate advocacy, mental health, and climbing mountains. It's pretty good. We have the Backdoor Theater space, so we're gonna probably have like the food and everything in there. So it'd be great to have some volunteers and just SAB members that are ready to kind of answer questions and talk about community solar. And like Rich, if you can be there to talk about your experience, that'd be fantastic. And then I also just wanted to do a plug for the Home Energy Squad, the Free Home Energy Squad Energy Assessments. If you guys are interested, I've got, I've got codes. It's actually one code, but we're going to be able to give, we have about 50 free home energy assessments. And we'd like to give a number of those away at the event. But also boards and staff members are welcome to sign up for that as well. So if, I think we were able to sign up, gosh, five years ago, Melody, was that when Dave gave us free energy assessments?
Yeah, 2018, when we did the first Pi thing. So four years ago.
Four years ago? Yeah. So if, if you're available for the 20th, you have questions, let me know. And then if you want to have the code for signing up for the energy assessment, reach out. We're just trying to like vaguely keep track of who's interested. So we'll know about how many, how many we'll have for the October 20th event.
What time is that event at, Erica?
5:30 to 8:30. And if you can only come for part of it, that's great too.
I'll try to be there.
Well, I think, yeah, I can come early. No problem.
I think I can be there too.
Awesome.
I am working on being there and I should be able to help clean up afterwards.
Awesome. Thanks, Melanie.
Yeah, me too.
Great. Okay. Thanks, you guys. I think Laura's planning to be there as well. So we'll have good representation. Also that if you can let friends and neighbors know, we're going to have some schwag from Pi. We're going to have little battery backup chargers and then hopefully smart power cords. And then these free energy kit codes that we'll give out to folks that sign up at the event. We'll have iPads for folks to sign up there. And anything else, Melody, that I'm missing?
I think that covers it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and cake. I really want to get a cake with a beautiful solar garden printed on it. Should be fun. That's all I had.
I'll just say briefly, I was at the CC4CA policy meeting today. And the emphasis was on greenhouse gas production emissions for the state and the various components were addressing it. So I think they're coming up with some good strategies at the state level that will help us meet greenhouse gas goals. I'll, I'll send more details some later date.
Thank you for doing that, Ellen. I appreciate that.
My pleasure. It's a really good statewide organization. They're doing a lot of good things. And we'll, we'll be testifying at the PUC about community choice energy next Tuesday. Which would, you know, if it makes that, makes it into a bill, it's maybe we're still probably two years out. And it gives communities like Netherlands a choice in where we get renewable energy without having to go through Excel. But that's, you know, we're step two, probably a four-step process.
Yeah, Ellen, I'd like to see some other people testify on Netherlands' behalf as well. So I don't, I think Tom was on that email that you forwarded. But I was, I was hoping that Joan would be able to share all, with all of us, the talking points and share that with folks to get them excited about C E E.
She said she's going to be sending them out. Surely.
Great. Yeah. So if folks are, are interested in testifying on some of these big bills, that, that means a lot. Ideally, they're looking for, you know, board members, but also, you know, B O T or city council. And then you can do written or you can do in person. And it kind of depends on what you have capacity for. But it's a good opportunity to really advocate at the state level, which is, so y'all know, that's why we joined CC4CA in 2018, I believe. Was because at the time, you know, this SAB board realized that we have these ambitious goals, but really we need to have bigger change at the state level. And CC4CA really advocates at the state level. They now represent, I believe it's one out of four Coloradans and are very well recognized at the federal level as well, which is very cool to see. They've, they've progressed a lot, even in the last four years that we've been members.
Everything's moving in the right direction. I can't believe it. I mean, it's hard not to be like super optimistic. I, I just see it on every single level. And so we are on the crest of making things happen in a tiny little town where it can really matter. I mean, it's an incredible opportunity.
Well, like I say, think globally, act locally.
Hey.
Don't have to worry about Washington D.C. Although Biden's doing a good job of providing some great funding for the right things.
Absolutely. All right. Anyone else have anything they want to update us on?
It's not really apropos, but I was just informed today that two of my films are going to be in the Netherlands International Film Festival. So.
Wow, congratulations.
Woo-hoo, congrats.
Yeah.
We're impressed. Wow. Whoa.
When is that happening?
November 5th, I think. I don't know what time. I don't know if it's an all-day thing. It's in the Backdoor Theater.
I'd put it on my calendar.
And one is a comedy I made. It's, they're both short films. One is a comedy and one is a documentary. So.
Oh, have to send us the trailer.
Yeah, trailers aren't very good.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, I'm not a big believer in trailers for seven-minute films. Because then the trailer really almost becomes as long as the film itself. So.
What's the documentary?
I'm very impressed. I really am. To do seven minutes, it's a big deal.
Yeah, the, the documentary, so I was in film school when I did these. And unfortunately, when my documentary class started, so did COVID. And I was really, they had real limitations on my ability to, to do stuff. Originally, they said I couldn't interview anybody. And I said, I'm doing a documentary. I'm not going to. And then they said I can do, you know, Zoom interviews. And I'm like, I'm supposed to do a professional documentary. I, I really can't do Zoom interviews. So I wanted to do it on these special districts that, that sort of the scan that developers use when they build housing communities, which the Denver Post did some really cool articles on. But there was just no way I could do that film with the restrictions they put on me. So I sort of just picked this very small little topic. And I did it on this thing called the KT Boundary, which is this layer of clay in the geologic record that is actually the stuff that was ejected when the asteroid that killed the dinosaurs off 65 and a half million years ago or so impacted. And there's a place in Colorado where you can actually go and see it. There's not a lot of places where you can do that. So it's sort of on me discovering that. And I interviewed, I was able to interview a couple of people finally. But, so it's, it's not what I wanted, but it's what I had to, could do with, what I could work with. And the, uh, the comedy is about a trip to the dentist. That goes horribly wrong. So.
My gosh.
It doesn't have a happy ending.
No, it has a very dark ending. Yeah.
I've been going through the seven circles of hell at the dentist the last six months. So I'm, I'm looking forward to laughing.
Okay, good. Well, that's all I got.
Sounds good.
Awesome, Rich.
All right. Well, we will see some of you hopefully at the event at the Backdoor Theater. And then we'll see everyone back here for another meeting on the 27th. And we can adjourn this meeting at 7:52 PM.